Ooh, now you're onto something.
Yeah, you know.
Accordion curls?
Well, in about ten minutes.
Are you really drinking coffee this late?
Yeah, I just came from a meeting and had some locked over and so, no, it was at a yellow dog actually. Because they don't have any of their sleeves on. So.
It is.
So I'm sorry to break my hot cup.
Welcome to City Council Study Session Tuesday, January twenty first.
Maybe I just texted.
Twenty twenty five. We have one item on the agenda, and that's the AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan Update, Water and Wastewater Master Plan. And it's got to be better than their six inches of snow in New Orleans because something has to amends.
No, thank you for having us. This is good. We're excited. We feel like we've thoroughly gone through our water and our sewer plans, and it helps staff to know how Norman is going to grow and supply the water and take care of the sewer needs for Norman. So I like what I'm seeing, but I'll introduce Nathan Maddenwald, who knows our utilities engineer, and Cole Niblet with Garber, and he's leading the charge here. And we have a great committee. He'll point all them out. Got a good picture. But no, we're excited. And we'll go fast. I know we have a lot of slides, but it's a lot of good information. So we'll try to go through it and make sure we cover.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And Mary Elizabeth, would you like to give opening words of wisdom from the AIM process at all?
No, I think Chris did a great job. So you almost heard me talk enough. So we'll let my pulpit come here.
All right. Well, let's dive right in. And like Chris said, Cole Niblet with Garber, proud resident of Norman. I live out east off Tecumseh and Sixtieth. So been blessed to work with the city of Norman since I moved here eight years ago. So really excited to be here with you all tonight. The goal of tonight's meeting is simple, provide an update and review our major findings from both these water and wastewater master plans. Certainly, there is some overlap between these two, but they're distinct enough that we'll go through water first and then wastewater shortly thereafter. So one thing I did want to carve out some time and make sure we spent some time giving kudos where they are due is for our subcommittee. We had an absolutely outstanding subcommittee. You can see folks on the screen here, Dr. Dave Sabatini, Bill Scanlon, Doris, I don't know if she got to make it tonight, Kyle Arthur, Dan Bergy, and Mark Daniels, who several of you will recognize from his time at the Norman Utility Authority. So I can't say enough about this group. They really took their tasks seriously. Spent time not just with our core meetings, but meeting with regional entities such as Oklahoma Water Resources Board, Oklahoma City, visited and toured the water plant, wastewater plant, COMCD pumping facilities. So really took this seriously and brought some really good feedback for us. So really, really can't say enough good things about that committee. All right. So our water master plan, just to kind of set the stage here, it's focused on bolstering two main buckets that I'll talk about tonight. One, water supply resources, and then delivering that safe drinking water supply to the end user. So water supply meaning the actual water resources that we withdraw from to meet those demands. And then the distribution system being how do we build and maintain an effective system of pipelines, elevated towers, things of that nature, to deliver in pressure, pressure to that in water user, affect a fire flow, things of that nature. So to give you kind of a high level view of Norman today, we have three primary water sources. Lake Thunderbird, which is treated at a conventional water treatment plant, the Vernon Campbell plant there. The Garber Wellington Aquifer, a series of wells out in eastern Norman. We do have a planned groundwater plant for additional treatment in the future that we're showing there. And then we also have a wholesale connection with the city of Oklahoma City where we purchase finished water pipe directly into that distribution system. And so similarly, just to define some terms, similarly on the wastewater master plan, that plan really focuses on what we call the collection system and then water reclamation. So from that water distribution system, water is used, goes down the drain, and we collect that wastewater through a series of pipelines, lift stations, et cetera, to convey that to a centralized water reclamation facility. So you'll hear us refer to that as the WRF, where we treat that wastewater to an acceptable level to be discharged back to the environment. In our case today, that goes to the Canadian River. So with that, that's kind of the primary buckets we're going to focus on tonight. I did want to give you just a brief overview of our process. And you may have seen this figure previously through the AIM master planning process, but wanted to kind of give you a high overview of the primary tasks and milestones that we work through in this master plan and how they build on each other as we move through that process. So number one, baseline development, that's where we sit down and develop water demand projections, things of that nature, to identify what we need in the future, what we need to supply in the future. Second, we look at an existing system assessment, look at what the system can provide today, what's the performance that our existing infrastructure can provide. Those two things allow us to run a very simple evaluation. We refer to it as a gap analysis. We know what we need in the future. We know what we can provide today. And then we start looking at how we fill those gaps. And that leads into task number three, our alternatives evaluation. We look at all the various infrastructure alternatives we have to meet those demands. And then finally, we put that all together in a master plan, a plan development that essentially gives us a roadmap for the next 20 years as it relates to water and wastewater infrastructure. Our subcommittee met at each of those major milestones, provided concurrence, good feedback before we moved on until we reached a draft set of master plan reports that we're here to talk about tonight. All right. So let's dive into the water master plan. Just to give you a snapshot of how the system looks today, our distribution system consists of many miles of underground pipes and water storage facilities throughout the city. And so you'll note the map to the right here, blue lines representing that distribution system, water pipes of various sizes throughout the city. We have our groundwater wellfields represented by the orange dots out in eastern Norman. We have the Vernon Campbell Water Plant here in yellow. And then that third water supply, I mentioned the OKC connection, that OKC connection is up here in northern Norman off I thirty five and Indian Hills. So that kind of gives you the literal sixty thousand foot view of the water system as it sits today. And so moving into that baseline development, we start with those water demand projections that I talked about. And as you might imagine, those increase proportionally with our service population. So showing you a demand projection graph here that we'll refer to a few times tonight. And just to orient you to this graph, we have demand on the left vertical axis and million gallons per day. We have the service population on the right vertical axis, and then we have years across the horizontal. So you can see Norman's population, as you've seen through the AIM process, has generally followed a linear trend over the last several decades. And so we're projecting that out over the next 20 years, and you'll see our water demand projections follow suit in a very similar trend. One thing I will point out, when we develop these water demand projections, we're essentially looking at how much water does the average user in Norman use on a daily basis from historical data and projecting that to the service population that we'll have in the future. One other thing we are carrying is what's shown in these light blue boxes here. Those are what we refer to as a reserve capacity. So in addition to that base water demand, we're accounting for a reserve capacity just to build in some additional conservancy to our water demand projections, account for things like severe drought, sustained drought conditions, increased commercial or industrial usage, things like that that can happen overnight essentially, and increase our water demands. So we're again carrying those to be conservative, sort of the phrase, plan for the worst, hope for the best as it relates to water demand.
I just have a question about the bar graph. I just noticed that, I'm curious what was happening in two thousand and five, and then it looks like it levels out and starts climbing back up in two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, and I'll let Chris speak to this a bit, but what you'll see over time is even though the population may have grown over that timeframe, things like leaky water pipes, water loss in the system can impact how much demand is actually needed. And so that could represent improvements in water loss in the system, kind of tightening up the system, so to speak, getting more efficient with that water use. And Chris, I don't know if there's a specific trend in two thousand and ten that drove that.
No, but oh six was that big drought, and people were using water. The trend, when you look at CH Two M Hills work back in the early two thousands, it was showing we were going to need a lot of water based on that, you know, they drew a line going up from early two thousands. And then after that drought, I don't know, people got water wise, we just started doing better.
I was going to say, did the water rate increases that we passed, I know they're far and few in between, but did that have any impact on two thousand and five too, or?
We also saw two thousand and five kind of the peak of the housing boom. And there was a big push industry wide in efficiency. So dishwashers, faucets, sinks, toilets, all begin a big water efficiency push coast to coast. And I think that's probably visible there too.
Absolutely. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was, it was just a little nominally, so yeah.
Yeah, it's a noticeable trend there. I agree. All right. So that's kind of that baseline development, water demand projection that I spoke about. And so moving into that existing system assessment, in the distribution system today, our performance under our maximum day conditions are generally good throughout the system. We're showing you on the right an output graph of our hydraulic modeling effort. So all this graph is showing you is all the various dots representing the modeled end pressure to the end user throughout the system. And so in this legend in the bottom left, you can see the darker blue and purple represents higher pressures in the system. Lower down, yellow, red, we get below thirty to forty PSI. Generally speaking, in our industry, we want to set forty five PSI as a target. Under that level, you start seeing things, it's noticeable when you go to take a shower or cook your evening meal. And so you might start to see complaints throughout the distribution system below that level. And so you can see, you really have to study this graph pretty closely to find some yellow dots here. There's a few localized areas, nothing that raises an eyebrow overly significantly. So right now, existing system assessment, the distribution system is performing well. Fire flows throughout the system are at good levels. And so moving forward in our water master plan as it relates to the distribution system, it's largely meeting new growth demands, new service areas, and maintaining this performance as we densify in certain areas. So that's really the take home message from our existing system assessment, keeping an eye on those things as we move forward. All right. So switching back to supply, just to give you a snapshot of how those three water supplies kind of interplay as we sit today. Lake Thunderbird is currently the largest source of supply and supplies around seventy percent of our water demand. So you can see, again, roughly that seventy percent coming from Lake Thunderbird in our blue surface water pie piece here, roughly a quarter, twenty four percent coming from groundwater, our Garber Wellington wells, and then seven percent coming from that OKC connection, which represents about one MGD, one million gallons per day of consumption. So I wanted to show you this pie graph. We'll come back to it later on after we present a water supply strategy for the next 20 years and show you kind of how this changes over the next couple of decades. So I mentioned that gap analysis, and so we dove right into that. And as it relates to water supply, our gap analysis identifies a potential water supply gap of approximately nine MGD by two thousand and forty five. And so this is the same water demand graph we just looked at with two additional lines. We have the pink line, which represents Norman's existing water supply allocations on an annual average basis with the Thunderbird Water Rights allocation. And then I'm also showing an orange line, which shows those same water supply resources, but with Lake Thunderbird's modeled firm yield. And so I'll explain this a bit. Don't want to, I don't think we need to chase this rabbit too far, but a little bit of nuance here. When Lake Thunderbird was constructed by the BOR and water rights allocated, that allocation was set at a total limit of twenty one thousand, six hundred acre feet per year. That is the water rights allocation that's been distributed to Norman, Midwest City, and Dell City. Since then, the BOR has gone through several modeling updates to identify what the firm yield of Lake Thunderbird is. Firm yield meaning what's the reliable year over year withdrawal we can take from Lake Thunderbird during sustained droughts and things of that nature. So this is not something the BOR is choosing to act on. This is purely just informational. We don't think there is an imminent change in the water rights in the near future. That's not what we're saying. Just showing this, we want to be cognizant of this as we plan for water supply resources and make that point in the water master plan. So that's why you're seeing it here. But ultimately, you know, looking at that pink line where our existing annual average water supplies are at, you can see without that reserve capacity, we're very close to our capacity as it relates to, you know, existing water rights. So I don't want you to see this graph and think, oh, my goodness, we're in emergency, we're out of water. That's not the message. There is a need to gain additional water supply. But again, because we're carrying conservancy in these projections, carrying that reserve capacity, we've got time to act. And we'll speak to this a little bit later on in the water supply strategy. All right. So before we, we're going to dive into those water supply alternatives. Before I do that, I want to define a few terms and just set the stage as it relates to potable reuse. You'll hear us talk about groundwater, surface water resources, and I just want to define what we mean when we start showing you potable reuse alternatives, just so those are clear. And all potable reuse is, is an active effort to reclaim our wastewater with engineered or natural barriers for drinking water supply. So showing you a conceptual rendering here on the screen. When we say indirect potable reuse, you'll hear us refer to that as IPR here in a few slides. That looks like the system you're seeing here where we take treated effluent from our water reclamation facility. We treat that through an advanced treatment process to get that to safe drinking water act standards. And then we discharge it into an environmental buffer, in this case would be Lake Thunderbird or a reservoir. We get some natural attenuation, storage, mixing while it's in that environmental buffer, and then eventually is withdrawn to be treated at a conventional water plant, again, before being distributed to end users. So when you hear us talk about IPR, this is the concept we're talking about. Many of you may have been involved with previous presentations on studies and the pilot program we did for this concept, and we can certainly get into more of those details as needed. So that's IPR. And then when you hear us talk about direct potable reuse or DPR, it's a very similar concept. We just remove the environmental buffer. So instead of discharging that advanced treated effluent to a reservoir or some environmental buffer, we provide additional engineered storage, engineered barriers before we send that directly to a conventional plant to be blended with raw water supply and then treated again. So just wanted to preface that, define some terms as it relates to potable reuse. So with that in hand, we looked at our water supply alternatives, and first we screened those for economic viability. So we brought forward a large list of water supply alternatives. All of these were evaluated in the previous strategic water supply plan, and we added one or two others as part of this effort. And so we're showing the list of those alternatives here on the vertical axis with unit costs on the horizontal. And unit cost is being capital cost in millions of dollars per million gallons a day of capacity gain from that specific water supply. So there's a few that jump out at you right off the cuff here. Things like stormwater capture, capturing stormwater throughout the city of Norman, conveying it to a single location for drinking water. Similar concept with Thunderbird spillage, capturing floodwater that goes over the dam at Lake Thunderbird, reclaiming that for drinking water. A new in basin reservoir, actually constructing a new surface water reservoir dedicated to Norman. These three, you can see have pretty significant capital costs. The next two, DPR is one we'll talk about a bit more, so I'll put a pin in that for now. And then the Scissor Tail Reservoir, some of you may have remembered from the previous water supply plan. This was a concept of building a new significant reservoir down in southeast Oklahoma near Ada, specifically dedicated to Norman and any municipalities that partnered with Norman, and pumping that to Norman as a water supply. Those top four, the top five minus DPR, you can see have some pretty substantial costs there. And then the remainder of these alternatives, you see the IPR alternatives. We have several of these shown, one using the existing WRF, and then we also have evaluated the potential for using a second WRF, a north or an east WRF, and we'll get into that in a bit more detail later on. Parker Reservoir was another concept similar to Scissor Tail. Canadian River Alluvial Wells, that involves developing a wellfield in a different aquifer than the Garber Wellington, which is currently what's being used. The Canadian River Alluvium is a geology present on the western side of Norman. More challenges associated with that aquifer that we'll get into in a bit. And then rounding out the bottom here, we have the Garber Wellington wellfield alternatives, showing those three different alternatives there. One, those Garber Wellington wells, if they only require disinfection, which is kind of the base level of treatment that those wells will require. If we have to add additional treatment for things like arsenic and chromium that you may have heard about naturally occurring in the Garber Wellington, have a separate alternative for that. And then finally, if we were to drill new wells with treatment and bring on a series of inactive wells that have not been used for some time. So that's kind of the gamut here. And finally, with OKC wholesale at the bottom. So we screened out several of those alternatives that just off the cuff did not seem feasible from an economic or otherwise non monetary perspective. And so we developed twenty year lifecycle costs for those shortlisted alternatives. And so showing you a graph here of what we refer to as twenty year lifecycle cost. That is not only our capital construction cost, but any ongoing operations and maintenance, upkeep costs over a twenty year period brought back to a net present value in dollar per thousand gallon produced. And so you can see we have things like OKC wholesale, Garber Wellington wells, IPR at the existing WRF, kind of on the lower end of that scale. Several of the other IPR alternatives, Canadian River Alluvium and DPR kind of rounding out the backend there. So with that, you kind of get a sense of the various array of costs we have. One thing we continually talked about in our subcommittee was the low hanging fruit as far as water supply has pretty well been utilized by Norman. You know, Lake Thunderbird, that allocation is capped. We're not expecting to get more water rights out of Lake Thunderbird. The groundwater wells where we can drill them in advantageous geology, those have been utilized. So we're kind of running out of what has typically been or historically been considered the low hanging fruit as it relates to water. So that's the dollars and cents side of the equation. We also look at these through a non monetary lens. So we worked with our subcommittee to identify a series of non monetary criteria that we use to rate these water supply options as well. And so these are things that might not necessarily show up in our cost estimates, but are very important to consider. So things like reliability, implementability, environmental impact, drought resistance. If we go procure that water supply, how effective is it in a sustained drought scenario? Flexibility and redundancy, does that add redundancy to our water supply portfolio? And you can see here expandability, public acceptance, and independence. And by independence, meaning if Norman goes and procures that water supply, do they have one hundred percent control over that water right or that water allocation? Or are we beholden to some other entity as part of that water supply? So you can see, we took this list of non monetary criteria, and the size of these bars are kind of representative of how heavily they were weighted by our subcommittee and staff scoring exercise. And so we take that and we essentially combine our non monetary and our monetary criteria together, and we create a heat map like what we see here. And so this is kind of a visual way to show what water supply alternatives score the best from both monetary and a non monetary perspective. So showing you that same twenty year lifecycle cost here on the vertical and the composite non monetary score on the horizontal. So in the game of this heat map, we want to be down and right. That's where we want to be in this graph. That we want to optimize lifecycle costs where we can and score as highly as we can on the non monetary axis. So you can see a few alternatives that kind of sneak into that green and lower blue zone. And I kind of spoke to this already, but want to point out, this non monetary scoring system, we worked through this through a series of workshops with our subcommittee, our staff, our city staff and Garber team to develop that system and come up with a consensus on those scores. And so what we take away from this is kind of our three to four preferred water supply alternatives. And so we have our two Garber Wellington alternatives showing you both, one, if those wells only require disinfection, and again, if we have to provide additional treatment, the OKC wholesale connection, and then IPR indirect potable reuse using the existing WRF. Those kind of come out of this exercise as our three preferred water supply alternatives.
Question on that, if we go back with wells of one sort or another, are we not also increasing the amount of contaminants that may occur naturally in the water and be able to bring it up?
Are you looking at me?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that I'm the one that answered that question, to be quite honest. I can answer questions more about the lake, so I'll let that call, he'll know.
So what I would say to that is the Garber Wellington Aquifer, it's what we call a bedrock aquifer. So it's not a perched water table that's directly influenced by runoff and things of that nature. It's a deep geology. And so if we tap a well into that aquifer, we're pulling out whatever is naturally occurring, which is, you know, the arsenic and the chromium, but nothing that's being directly influenced by the surface that has been identified by any literature.
By putting more wells in there, do we draw, when those cones go down for the wells, are they drawing from each other in those contaminants or spacing correct?
We have to be cognizant about well spacing, absolutely. And so that's one disadvantage to groundwater is we can only put so many wells in so many square miles. So as we continue to expand that wellfield, eventually that does become a challenge, both just with the spacing that we run out of space in city limits, and then also conveying that back to a centralized location. So right now, the Garber Wellington is pretty heavily studied, and there's a lot of monitoring wells. So right now, the good news is all the data is suggesting that aquifer is holding strong. And as long as the well spacing is adhered to, all the data suggests that that aquifer is resilient and has not been impacted by the city wells at this point.
One other thing, Mayor, is when they do a test well before they actually complete that well, they do extensive water quality testing throughout that to determine if there's any presence of contaminants that aren't making or meeting the safe drinking water act. And so they look for locations where those concentrations are below or nonexistent before they complete. Yes, sir.
All right. And so moving forward from there, we've identified, you know, our preferred water supply alternatives. So now it's time to put those into a cohesive strategy, a cohesive plan. And so one thing we've really, or a few things we've really emphasized is putting together a plan that is flexible and able to adapt to changes in growth dynamics, market conditions, whether that's, you know, construction costs, steel and commodity prices, things of that nature, and also regulatory conditions. So we're presenting a plan that we feel doesn't put all our eggs in one basket, so to speak, try to build in redundancy and flexibility into this plan that also makes it more implementable for city staff, gives them some flexibility when they sit down to put together those capital projects. And so just to kind of summarize a few things we've already touched on for each of our three water supplies, I wanted to touch on just real quickly a few advantages, pros and cons for each alternative. We've talked about the OKC connection. Some of the advantages of this alternative is it's easily implementable or easily implementable. We have an existing connection right now. It's almost as easy as opening a valve, so to speak. With our existing OKC connection, we can go get an additional five MGD of supply right now with no capital improvements. So that's a definitely short term benefit to that supply. Once, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, do we know how long the water rates are locked in for with Oklahoma City?
So they put their rates on a five year schedule. So what they've done historically is they will actually publish their rates in three to five year blocks.
Okay.
So that's in their ordinances. They, you know, have the discretion to run their rate study once every couple of years and update those rates on that rolling basis.
So when the next time the three to five year block is going to come out?
They invited us to a meeting here in a few weeks to go here the next five year. Right now, it was two seventy eight in this last year. January just went to two eighty.
Two eighty nine.
Two eighty nine. It goes up about five percent a year.
So we anticipate continuing just to go up.
We made those projections to, so we compared apples and apples.
That's locked into the numbers that you guys kind of. Yep. And that's a great segue into, you know, the rest of the picture for OKC. It's there. We can go get additional five MGD right now. With additional capital improvements, we can get more capacity. One thing to watch there is that that water rate situation, you know, the less water independence there, that is something where an entity outside of Norman has the ability to influence those rates directly. So that is something to monitor as it relates to that OKC supply. Second, those Garber Wellington wells, advantages there, it's a proven water supply. Norman's been using that for years. Had very good luck with that water supply. That wellfield expansion is something that has been going on historically. It's planned to be maintained moving forward. That's a very well known and well understood water supply. And Mayor, we just talked about some of those disadvantages. You touched on this already. Some of the limitations to that wellfield is our yield per well and how we have to space those out. So at a certain point, there's just an overall capacity constraint as it relates to going full groundwater. Yes, sir.
Do you know if any of our residents who work five, if their personal wells are in the Garber Wellington, or are they in more shallow?
They are in a more shallow aquifer, and there's a great white paper we can circulate on this and some data that we've talked about through this process through both ACOG and OWRB. And I'm one of those people. I'm out on a well and work five. And so I think my well's about a hundred foot deep, a hundred twenty, something like that. City wells are averaging what?
Below three hundred and below.
Yeah.
It's kind of like a two story house, and so far, the data we've taken, we can pump the cone in that three hundred to six hundred feet water, and it will draw it down, but they're up in like a second floor drinking that perched aquifer of the, up to about two hundred feet deep. And that one doesn't go down, being within fifty feet of where we're pulling. So we have some test wells out there, but we want to continue to watch that.
Absolutely. It's something we need to continue to monitor. But right now, the data suggests, you know, those geologies are well separated, and there's not a direct influence. not a direct influence. And then finally, potable reuse. Several advantages there as it relates to drought resiliency, as long as there's water being consumed, there's a reliable wastewater flow there that can be reclaimed for drinking water. So a lot of advantages from a drought resiliency and reliability perspective. A few disadvantages there, public acceptance, permitting and regulatory pathways are the main milestones still to be, you know, fully fleshed out as it relates to reuse, both as it relates to water rights, you know, if we put five MGD into Lake Thunderbird, can Norman receive five MGD of water right coming out? And then, you know, concurrence from the member cities that also use Lake Thunderbird as well as another key regulatory pathway there. Yes, ma'am.
Is the public acceptance like Norman or outside of Norman?
I would say the polling we've done through this AIM process and others through the pilot program, the public responses to polling has actually been pretty positive.
So it's outside of Norman?
I don't know.
The regulatory stuff because of other cities having a say?
So I would say, as it relates to getting IPR shovel-ready and ready to go, I would say there are more challenges as it relates to the regulatory pathway. But that's not just the member cities, that's OWRB and DEQ, a few other entities, not just dependent on other member cities. As far as straight public acceptance, that's a little more subjective. Like I said, our polling has had good findings so far, you know, as it relates to going out to vote for a rate study or things like that. I don't know if we have enough data to be conclusive on that, but.
Okay, thank you.
I would add one to your question, though. Right now, the laws say if we put that water in the lake, right when the water hits that lake, it's not our water anymore. So why would we spend $150 million to put water in that lake and it's not ours? So that's one of the first things is getting the legislation updated that you'd have a credit if you put it in, surely you would get it back out. Things like that sound trivial, but they're concerning, you know, as a pathway.
Do we know if there's any proposed legislation to do just that?
We met with Water Board and they said we need to get a group together and start making it happen.
Okay, all right. Okay, and so when we put this all together and look at a cohesive strategy, our subcommittee, we had a lot of laughs about this, we really wanted to put together one figure that kind of put together our plan all in one place. And so we haggled over how to make this figure ad nauseam, but we're really happy with where this came out. So think of this as kind of a swim lane diagram, so to speak. We've kind of got a tract for each of those preferred water supplies and how we see those moving forward. One for each OKC wells and reuse. Our dark maroon boxes are representing an anticipated or recommended supply option and the timing associated with that. We also have shown in the light pink boxes, potential supplies or contingency supplies as needed, and then also a planning and feasibility stage for reuse specifically for the items we just discussed, that regulatory pathway and things of that nature. So starting from the upper left, we mentioned that OKC Wholesale Connection, that's something we can go get additional demand tomorrow, you know, following a contractual amendment with OKC, there's additional supply there essentially ready to go.
Yes, sir. Contractual amendment, is there a timeline associated with that or could we do basically a five-year? I'm wondering if the OKC Wholesale is a temporary option, if we can do it for a little bit until we get some of the other things off the ground or a little further down the road and then pull that back. I don't want to commit to that long-term, that's really where I'm going.
Well, you know, in our conversations, and there is a fascinating educational opportunity to recognize what exists in the OKC system to ensure availability. We currently have up to 5 million gallons a day when Chris and Nathan need to turn on the spigot, but we don't usually use it. If council said, let's increase that potential should the need arise, I think that's a contractual conversation we can have. The capacity, if I'm not mistaken, they wanted to design a water system that would support 2 million people in the metro or some, it's a big giant capacity design and we're not anywhere close to that. So we think the volume is there, it's just a matter of if we tied it up contractually but rarely exceeded our current 5 million, what implications might that have? I don't think that's a conversation we've had, but happy to advance that conversation.
Yeah, but we feel comfortable, they're like an OG and E, they're a utility provider. So they're not a scary monster like we've thought in the past as we've gotten to have this relationship. And Raff Tellis is also their cost of service persons that do their cost of water. And so they clearly say, this is just what we, here's how we're running our system and this is why we need to raise everyone's rates, you're just one of many. They're not just, they don't charge us more because we're Norman or charge Yukon some more because they're Yukon or more, more's totally on them. So they're a utility and it's just an option. And so us as staff, what we've really learned to love is having the three sources of water. We don't want all Oklahoma City, we don't want all wells, and we don't want all the lake because having the three, one of them break all the time and having two left at least gives you a little bit of breathing room. And so we would love to keep that, what they call a nice portfolio, like investing or something.
Diversified. You know, and the realization that it operates as a not, they don't have a profit motive, they're not shareholders that require a return on the investment. So they operate theirs the way we operate ours. We make sure we cover all of our operating costs and hopefully we're setting aside a couple bucks to keep up with ongoing maintenance so the system is there for us long-term.
I think that's the thing I was most concerned about, you know, the idea of supply and demand, we need it and they've got it, well now we're beholden to whatever they, whatever terms they want to come up with. But I appreciate you saying that they don't seem to be that kind of thing.
Thank you. But they have a five-year rate plan, but they raise their rates every year. And our last rate increase, we went nine years without raising it. Before that, it was nine years without raising it. We've had three water rate increases in this century, since 1999, that have been approved by voters. And so as Oklahoma City continues to raise their rates, if Norman is not asking for a rate increase or getting it approved by voters, that means we're eating into the water fund, the general fund may have to kick in at some point. That's a scenario that could be possible if we're relying too heavily on Oklahoma City, given our situation.
On a graph, though, we've graphed this and brought it forward in front of everyone, but by them going up 4% to 5% a year, they're just smoothly following the cost of inflation and keeping up with it. We go along flat and then we go up 30%, you know, so we're stair stepping and still getting to the same number they are because that is the cost of water. I mean, that's what Raff Tellis will come, look at your books and tell you, you're not charging enough, that's why you're not, that's why you're broke. So to keep that, you need to have 4% or 5% a year to keep up with all the, you know, things that are going up.
And Councilor, we're hoping to your point of, you know, they have this pretty consistent straight line. When we have capacity concerns and we look at where's the next cheapest water coming from, well, we know what it costs to drill a well and we know what it yields and we know what it costs to attempt to influence the capacity at Lake Thunderbird and we know what that might yield. So at least it's the most mathematically consistent, reliable. We can give you a pretty good idea what it's going to cost, you know, four years from now for an extra million gallons. And when we talk about drilling water wells, they're still a hit and a miss. Sometimes we get 250 gallons a minute, sometimes we don't. So it's less risky from.
Labor, electric and chemicals are going up that same 4% to 5% every year, too. So and they keep going up so high and then that's when we, our checkbook gets broken and I come asking everyone for a rate increase.
And then we have to ask the public to raise it 50%.
Is the five MGD limited by the contract or by the pipe size?
Pipe size.
And to that point, if we go over, you know, that threshold, we can get more, you know, build additional infrastructure, build a second connection and we've accounted for that. But yeah, that's an infrastructure limitation on that existing connection. So yeah, we heard the term as it relates to our water supply portfolio. Over the next five to seven years, that OKC Wholesale Connection and it continuing to expand into the Garber Wellington, it's kind of the short-term alternatives that make sense to continue marching forward on as demand dictates over the short-term. In the meantime, we talked about that reuse planning pathway, flanging up the water rights discussion, things of that nature, getting those pathways more finalized, getting that project more shovel-ready so that, you know, at the end of that five to seven-year period and, you know, we project to have a mostly built-out well field at that time or at least a significant portion of it, then be ready to move into that IPR system to bring on additional capacity. As far as the contingency plans we talked about, we just hit on this, if we get into a situation where additional OKC supply makes sense, we can go construct a second OKC connection and then maybe even expand the existing connection, you know, in the long-term as needed. Those are kind of second and third contingency plans, so to speak. Furthermore, for the wells, showing additional contingency spending potentially for treatment of those well field supplies and then, you know, maybe additional expansion even further out into the future as demand dictates. Finally, we talked about DPR as compared to IPR. If those regulatory pathways or the economics of IPR become challenging for whatever reason and DPR makes more sense, at that time, that is also additional fallback as far as that water supply pathway as well. And then putting this together, really the same information, just shown graphically a little bit differently, we bring back that same water demand curve compared to the existing water supply. Really what this amounts to is using additional groundwater wells and that OKC connection to fill the gap short-term, so to speak. And then again, in that seven to 10-year timeframe, bringing on a more substantial expansion with the water reuse system. So I know we just unpacked a lot, I'll pause here and see if there's any other questions on any of that.
Did you guys consider running a pipe from Hefner to just raw water coming down?
We did, we did. The cost is pretty negligible, the cost difference between buying finished water and raw water. And by the time we put it into Thunderbird and now it's everyone's water, Nathan had a good analogy of you can go to the grocery store and buy a steak, but it's only $5 more to go have it cooked it out back or whatever.
With a potato.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, with a potato, that's right.
In 2006 was a rate increase, actually, Bob.
Did we look at any potential policy recommendations to maybe make more efficient use of the water we do have currently? I know we explored smart meters recently and getting some of those implemented to try and track down where there's water loss in the system and again, make more efficient use of it. So I don't know if you guys looked at anything like that.
We didn't hard code any water conservation efforts here as like a supply alternative kind of thing, just because it's hard to really materialize those and truly know what you're getting, so we want to do these hard. But at the same time, we are going to implement our metering and then start looking at ways where we can conserve through that system.
The inverted block rate has really.
Yes.
What was that again? Inverted block rate by charging more for when you get up over 20,000 gallons.
Yeah, yeah.
It makes sense. It's a big number and people do curtail use.
All right. So to put a bow on this discussion, we'll bring back the pie chart we looked at briefly earlier. And so again, comparing to current day in 2025, you can see with this recommended water supply portfolio that we've been talking about, what that looks like potentially in 20 years and 2045. Roughly a third and a third coming from surface water and the Garber Wellington, slightly larger component from OKC, roughly 16%, and then another 20% coming from, you know, the recommendation of IPR with a fallback of OKC or additional groundwater. And so finishing up with a few more details here on water, also wanted to give you a summary of our 20-year capital improvement plan, so not just as it relates to water supply, but also the water distribution system. And I know there's a lot of colors on this graph, but generally speaking, we've got 12 primary projects or a series of phased projects grouped into three primary buckets. The existing water service area improvements are distribution system improvements shown here in the maroon dots, and those are focused at, you know, maintaining and upkeeping that existing service area like we talked about. The green, similar, the green dots there, going towards future water service area improvements, so either new service areas or new users or densification in some of those northern and eastern areas. And then finally, the water supply improvements that we just talked about, the groundwater, IPR and then OKC connection as needed. If we look at this CIP, showing you a kind of a tabular format here with the timing and the spending, showing those same three buckets, existing water service area spending at roughly 24 million, future water service area spending around 152, and then those water supply improvements showing 438. With the bulk of that being the IPR system, and I'll say that that 350 baked into that is a full 15 MGD, fully built-out IPR system. It's much more likely that we would take that project in phases, go with a five or 10 MGD system and come in at a lower cost. But just for the sake of conservancy, showing a full build-out of that system here for these costs. And then finally, showing kind of the same spending in a capital outlay schedule or more of a cash flow schedule, if you will. And you can see the same three categories there with the bulk of our spending showing kind of ramping up in 2028 through 2034. But it's important to point out, like we talked about, we've set up this plan to where it's driven by demand. We want to make improvements as demand dictates. So this plan is set up in such a way that if water demands do not grow as quickly as projected, the staff have flexibility to push out those projects and, you know, wait on demand triggers to implement those projects, so.
So and it may become really visible when we look at the wastewater side. But Chris and I have had this conversation about, you know, what's the capacity of the current plant? And we issue 450 residential building permits on an annual basis, plus or minus, and we're not watching our capacity being consumed with our treatment plant. So we think, well, we've got 450 more units washing dishes, showers and everything else. The water demand goes up faster than it actually materializes the wastewater treatment plant and you realize it is more efficiencies going in, the newer construction, the more efficient, smaller lot sizes, potentially less landscaping or more water-efficient landscaping being invested in. So, you know, it'll be, you know, anybody's guess as to what the actual demand will look like. We should probably all pick a gallon per year, you know, number and see who's the closest in 10 years and see what actually materializes.
I'm kind of curious about commercials, you know, more restaurants, more gyms, like what does that look like per year?
In terms of what you guys see on the, well, and I think our new meter installation program, we'll be able to, I think we'll have better real-time data to show what some of those very specific commercial uses look like. I don't know how detailed a report we can pull with current data to talk about those, you know, restaurants, gyms, can we break them down categorically by water demand and see, I mean, do we have granular data like that on customer type?
I would say commercial too, but you know, you will have a law office or whoever is also watering their lawn. It's kind of curious, I mean, residential, yes, but then on the business end, we expect business to grow, so.
Yeah, we'll start grabbing what we can pull.
Then we could put some stuff out with restaurants that wash dishes, those are the big users. And then the ones that serve on paper plates or, you know, a lot of disposable, they don't use much. Offices don't really use much water.
But if they're not washing dishes, you catch it in the sanitation side when you're picking up the trash, so.
Yeah.
Our demands, though, we think are conservative to absorb that. So we do think we have some buffer in there to handle.
Yeah. Peacock, do you have a question? Yeah, it's kind of more on the policy side, but I'd love to explore what it would take to put together an incentive program based for people to retrofit their fixtures. We've got a 70-year-old toilet, let's get you one of the low-flow toilets, let's just start piecemealing everybody's in-home infrastructure, you know, hopefully over time, this little bit of money spent here might net a lot of money saved over the long-term, so.
We've spent a lot of time discussing what my grandfather taught me about not wasting water. For those people that went through that period of time, water is still gold, we can't live without it. We have a certain amount we have to drink per day, all the rest of the other kind of stuff. And it's just, to me, this is, it's not the news I want, but it's the news I want because it'll help us plan that towards and I think it's brilliant. And I appreciate you guys working on this so hard because it's expensive and we've got to make the right decision.
Just got to note, our commercial consumption makes up about 15% of the total demand for water in Norman, so my brain was telling me it was probably a bigger chunk than that, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So what was the conversation? How did it go related to reclaiming storm water? I mean, I realize it's a high cost item, but was there any in-depth discussion? Was there any type of analysis on how that could happen?
Yeah, there, there, that was something we looked at. That conversation just leads to the amount of infrastructure needed to capture it and pump it and pipe it all to one location. Just, it, it gets excessive. By the time we go through all that effort, you know, we could build two or three reuse systems. And so it was mainly just an economic decision.
Because you're doing that on such a small time increment. There's months where you're not going to have anything and then when it does come, you've got to handle that peak capacity. And that's, that's where we struggle. We don't like having to deal with those big peaks. So.
Ninth ward in New Orleans, when Katrina came, those pumps could not keep up because it just wasn't planned to do that.
And no one's drinking water when it's storming. So then you got to store it somewhere until everybody's thirsty again.
And, and Chris usually tells us when we have big rain events, you see volume at the wastewater treatment plant go way up. And you're thinking, how did it go down the drain? What's going into manholes in the middle of streets that are now underwater? And there's a visible increase as to what winds up at the wastewater treatment plant. Not good for the bugs. Steve likes it, you know, stable and those peaks and valleys cause him some grief out there.
It's a pretty good segue.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great segue. Everyone's favorite. Um, and, and I, I, I appreciate you guys. I know there's a lot of graphs and content. We just worked through wastewater. There's a bit less to unpack. So this will go a bit more, bit more briefly here. We'll, we'll go through a similar process here, just kind of giving you that, that 30,000 foot view of Norman's wastewater system. And again, uh, we've got our collection system, which, uh, consists of all the green sewer pipe you're seeing in this map, various sizes. A series of lift stations shown in the orange dots. Lift stations, uh, being wherever we, we try to use gravity flow wherever possible. But when we have to pump that wastewater over a ridge to keep it moving, it's where a lift station comes into play. Um, and you can see in Norman, uh, highlighted in blue here, there's a distinct ridge that, that flows or, or runs right through the middle of Norman. Generally speaking, everything on the north and east of that line flows to, uh, Little River, Rock Creek, Dave Blue, uh, ultimately Lake Thunderbird. Everything on the southern, uh, western side of that line flows to the Canadian River. So that's where you'll know that most of our lift stations are on the north and east side of that line, pumping over that ridge to get everything ultimately to our water reclamation facility here on the southern end of town, shown in that red triangle. So looking at our wastewater, uh, flow demand projection, it's a very similar exercise to water. Again, increases proportionally with the service population. You can see here showing roughly, uh, 12 to 13 M G D, uh, conservatively here in 2025. And ending at 2045 roughly 17 M G D for an average annual wastewater, wastewater demand. And so when we look at the collection system, the key areas for improvement here, um, mainly include trunk mains in the core service area. So talking about areas like Bishop and Emhoff Creek, where we have these primary core interceptors all coming together, conveying all the system's flow just upstream of the water reclamation facility. There are some capacity, um, bottlenecks we're tracking here that'll be a key part of the C I P as it relates to that collection system. And then also if, if you take the time to peruse that report, you'll see we've identified several localized areas, um, less, less magnitude, but still capacity constraints. We want to identify or evaluate some of those localized areas. And Daryl, just as you were talking about, a lot of these kind of spot areas are related to inflow and infiltration, which is where we get that groundwater or surface water runoff that makes it into our collection system. Whether that's a submerged manhole, a leaky joint, uh, submerged underground water, things of that nature. So these are areas where kind of smaller, more focused projects can go in, do some sewer evaluation, smoke testing, things of that nature. And hopefully tighten up that collection system and, and improve the capacities as needed. Moving to water reclamation, um, showing you an aerial here of the existing wharf, uh, currently rated for 16 M G D and, and in relatively good condition. You'll recall that demand projection was showing about 17 M G D, um, in 20 years. So we've got most of that capacity right here in our existing wharf. Plant staff are doing a great job maintaining this, uh, see no issues with, with this wharf, uh, moving forward. And so, um, we did evaluate the use of additional, uh, water reclamation facilities. Several of you may have, um, read or been a part of the previous studies where a north water reclamation facility was evaluated and recommended. We also include an evaluation for a northeast or a southeast wharf. And the idea here being if enough wastewater is concentrated on the northern or eastern side of Norman, can we build an additional wharf that treats it there locally and save money, not having to pump it over that ridge we were talking about? Ultimately, that existing wharf, uh, the economy of scale, having so much capacity that we need right there already. That's a, that's a big benefit for the existing wharf. And so ultimately that's recommended for the next, uh, 20 year planning horizon. And you can see that, uh, proven out in the costs here. And so when we look at expanding the existing wharf compared to building those, those north or eastern wharfs, excuse me, fairly substantial cost jump to go to those, the, that second wharf. And so when you look at the conveyance costs associated with getting all the wastewater to one location, relatively similar amongst the four alternatives. It really is the treatment cost associated with that second wharf that really tips the scales towards the existing wharf.
And that's redundant staff, redundant chemical supply.
That's right. Absolutely. And, and you see that, that very point proven out in the lifecycle costs. If we look at a 20 year lifecycle, that existing wharf coming in, you know, just under $8 per thousand. And we look at those other additional wharfs, adding those, we're up over nine, $10 per thousand comparatively. So. This was, uh, one of the key findings from our, uh, master plan report with previous master plans recommending that north wharf. One thing I will point out is that we're crafting the plan in such a way that we're not saying no to the north wharf forever. Uh, we're going to build the collection system in such a way that if in the future it makes more economic sense to go to a north or east wharf, the collection system will be laid out in a way that, that helps make that happen. So not totally pushing that alternative off the table just for the next 20 years, uh, identifying it's, it's more cost effective to stick with the existing wharf.
And Chris, that real estate the city already owns, correct?
Yes. And we were thinking we would need to build that plant in 2035 to 2038. But this just tells us we need to continue to monitor, might pivot to another northeast lift station. Or it'll be kind of driven by development where, where we grow.
So it lives on the ballot sheet of the wastewater fund. It's not a general fund asset. It's specific to this operation.
All right. And then rounding out wastewater here, going to show you a series of, of capital improvements, maps and graphs similar to water. And so we, we have this organized similarly where we have roughly 12 projects here. Existing wastewater service area improvements shown in the, the purple dots here. What we call the future eastern conveyance improvements in the orange dots. That eastern conveyance network, uh, intended to service, uh, new residential growth as it, um, uh, reaches further east in Norman. Building an eastern conveyance network that can convey that through a series of lift stations down to the existing wharf. You might notice these regional lift stations we're showing here in green for the future. Those are very near some of the, uh, uh, second wharf sites we evaluated. So if in the future it makes sense, we've got a regional lift station here that can potentially service the headworks for that north or east wharf.
And what's the north, south section of that eastern, what's that, 60th Street?
So right here is 60th? Yes, sir. Yep.
Those lift stations are approximate, so they can, they can shift a little bit upstream or downstream. So. Where we find is the right spot when we get into that detailed design.
All right. Uh, similar, similar spending table here, a little bit better than the water side. Existing wastewater service area spending roughly 75 million. Eastern conveyance network roughly 339 million. And existing wharf improvements, uh, through a series of projects showing at just over 62 million. And then we have the, the same capital outlay or, or cash flow, uh, spending schedule as, as previous. Uh, this is a bit more front loaded, uh, compared to water, you know, spending ramping up in 2027, really through 2032. But again, um, this is all driven by demand as it occurs in the system. So demand triggers are going to drive these improvements. Demand actually as it's observed is going to dictate when these projects, you know, really make the most sense. So. All right.
So Chris, quick, quick question. We're 16 M G D on the build out, we, we might need another million, million five gallons per day capacity. On your existing footprint, uh, do you and Steve have kind of an idea about what project, what, what, what would be entailed to gain a million gallons a day in quick capacity?
You did that. Kind of, I mean, your equipment, the first thing we're going to do is a, a storm holding pond will help control flows. Your other thing is your grit removal seems to be a bottleneck right now. So we need to up it. It's, it's kind of in the capital outlay.
Yeah.
And what will make it, and really it, it'll treat to 17. We're just not supposed to say that.
That's exactly what I was about to say is, uh, there, there is a technicality in the D E Q regulations that on paper make this a 16 M G D plant. In effect, by industry design criteria, it's a 17 M G D plant. So, um, there, there'll be some permitting conversations in the future, but most of the infrastructure, the vast majority of the infrastructure we need is there today.
I think we're talking about, um, a rate increase on wastewater. Does some of what we're talking about also encapsulate this future planning?
Not what we had brought to you before. We were just needing a little bit for O and M, just to get the budget up. But what we plan to do now is they've said what we need for Norman. And now we see us going back to a ref tell us and figuring out how, how would this be funded? How much is on growth? How much is on today's people? And what's a good way to have connection fees and things to maybe pay for this? So that's our next step after we figure out where we're going. And, and we, and the other thing too is the populations out all came from the AIM committee. You know, they said how big we're going to grow Norman. And then, then we said, okay, we're going to make plumbing to provide for that, you know, 175,000, we need this. Or, and then the growth is kind of looking at that east, they said, where it looks like we could grow in this area. Well, then that's how the lift station's kind of fit in those areas of how you might get that to pay for. You wouldn't build something out east if you're growing west, you know, so it's kind of just followed the, the AIM committee. So it's good, good that we all did this together, even though it's complicated, it, it does make some sense.
It is SimCity for real.
And I'll say one, one thing we kind of glazed over, but one good thing about doing the same process together. You know, timing of key transportation projects as it relates to some, some core water lines. We're going to get, you know, an inside look at, you know, timing and making that more efficient. So definitely some efficiencies realized by doing these, you know, parallel together.
Oh, again, it's a, it's a wonderful plan. Thanks to the subcommittee that did that and the whole committee for, for working it through. It's, it's not an easy question. It's been a conversation. If we can't play golf, we can at least talk about water or sewer. It's been a long time in trying to figure out these things and you guys have got a better solution than I ever did. I think it's a wonderful, but expensive proposition. Other questions from council? Well, that makes it easy. Thank you all. Thank you, Cole.